Good morning, welcome to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting on Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018. Roll call please.
Commissioner Howard, Commissioner Waymire.
Here.
Chair Renode.
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Okay, if you would please stand and join us in a pledge allegiance followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning Todd.
Well, good morning, everybody. In my morning devotions this morning, I was reminded about how God uses all kinds of people, believers, non-believers, everybody. I mean, if we're, if we're seeking Him and His wisdom, He will tend to use us. And my prayer for you today is that you guys seek Him and His wisdom. And in Corinthians, or Colossians, chapter two, they write, "I want them to be encouraged and knit together by strong ties of love." "I want them to have complete confidence that they understand God's mysterious plan, which is Christ Himself. In Him lie hidden all the treasures of wisdom and knowledge." May you all be granted that wisdom and knowledge to lead this awesome county in ways that He wants it led. Pray with me. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for all the leaders of this county, men, women, who truly want the best for the county. May they seek You and Your wisdom and knowledge to lead it in a way that brings glory to You and brings happiness and joy to this whole county. May we all be knitted together in love as we go forward, seeking You for the good of this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence and organizational business. We're gonna move back to the end of the meeting today. Anything else then Derrick? Okay. Have anyone signed up for public comment? Nope. Okay, then I'd consider a motion for the consent agenda, which would be approved in meeting minutes for May 9th. Claim vouchers in the amount of $713,222.62 and a tax change order in the amount of a negative $36,767.10.
I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes. Okay, our first item of business, the approving of an engagement letter with Rodney Burns for auditing services for 2018 Derrick?
Yeah, since I've been here Rodney's been our auditor. Rodney does a great job. He, I think the thing about him is he is very hard on us. Very meticulous when he does his audit and frankly doesn't overlook anything, even the slightest issue. And so I, I enjoy working with him. He's someone that seems to have established a good rapport with both Janet and I. This contract is the same as it's been since I've been here. And I, I would recommend that we enter into this agreement for his services.
Okay. Any board comments?
Well, I think Rodney's been doing a good job for some. I'll make a motion to approve entering into an audit engagement letter with Rodney M. Burns for auditing services for year 2018.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes. Okay, next item for business is the recommendation for a cosponsorship applicant benefit. Susan?
Good morning gentlemen.
Morning.
You've had an opportunity to review the spreadsheet that I submitted. This information is based on our tourism committee that we pulled together from our current board that we have out there. These were made of people who have participated not only in a lot of these events, but also have worked these events. So I feel like they were really good qualified people to review this information. Were there any questions on any of the recommendations that the committee made?
I have one question. What was the Excellence Gala? What was that?
It's a fundraiser for ransom. One of the things that I shared with this committee was basically some state statutes about what TGT money is and how it can be used. I felt that this would be a good guideline for them to use when they were making the criteria. So we were all looking at the same criteria. One of the things that this committee would like to do is perhaps change the application date to January. We seem to miss groups sometimes. Jayhawkers Days was one of those. Did not receive any funding because even though we sent on an application, it wasn't returned. This year, we did put the applications and some of this information on our Facebook page, hoping that we would capture another group of people that may have missed in the past. I really don't feel we got a lot of response from that. So the group is looking at ways that we can improve this going forward.
What was the date in this time?
They needed to have everything done by the 27th of April. They had over a month. And, you know, I sent the applications out as soon as, as I could. One of the group's concerns, as you can see, the Veterans Day Parade Committee gave us their application May 21st, which was Monday. The committee was not able to get together prior to that time. While they, I believe if we had an opportunity to meet, they would feel that this would meet the criteria for receiving TGT money in this way as a cosponsor. But they felt like they shouldn't set a precedent until they had an opportunity to review this and how we were gonna go forward in the future. We just don't want these trickling in. So we weren't sure, but we felt that we needed to bring it to you for an opportunity to review. I can share with you that last year, the Veterans Parade received $300 in TGT funds from cosponsorships.
And I would add to that. I think tourism is obviously still new enough for the county that we're still kinda working our way through how you want this handled. I mean, I know we've talked about that kinda normal expenditures of TGT funds and you all have empowered me and Susan to work through that and we have. But this is a little bit different because they are cosponsors. And I feel like the commissioners should certainly guide us on how you wanna handle these. My thoughts with regard to the Veterans Day Parade are, again, this is still raw enough. We're still refining it. I, I, you know, I'm fine if 300 is what we've historically given. I do think that brings people in from out of town. I think each year we do this. The process will become more refined. You know, and certainly would defer to the Tourism Committee on what they feel is best.
And she did indicate to me that she had a family member pass away and did also have other health situations. And, and my committee certainly, you know, respected life happens and, and things of that nature. But we felt because of the lateness of this application, it needed to be brought to your attention, rather than that group just making a blanket determination that would set a precedent going forward.
What are the dates now that they should have their application in by?
This past year, it was April 27th, the last Friday in April. And going forward, we felt like we needed to have something in writing that maybe was on our website that said cosponsorship opens this date and ends this date. And this is something that this committee is gonna work with me on developing that. And then we'd like to bring that to you at a later time. But because these groups are getting ready to start their events, we felt that we needed to use what we had used last year as a template as we move forward.
So if someone came up with an event after the cutoff date and they, they had some idea, they wanted to have an event, how would they go about that? Or would they not be eligible?
Well, and that's, and that's-
Special circumstances or-
And that's a very good question. And we do have that occur. Things that come into our community that we feel like as a tourism venue or an opportunity, we really need to support. And we do have money. That is not the, the total figure that I have right here for cosponsorship is not what is in that line item. So there is, you know, funds that we could pull out if an event were to occur. That has happened in the past. Perhaps OMA brings in a concert that we truly feel would bring people to this community. We have an opportunity to co-sponsor with them at that point and provide some funds from the TGT cosponsorship line item.
Yeah, and I think doing it this way, and again, I, we will work at your direction. But some of putting this cutoff in place is so we don't come to you guys, you know, I mean, I don't know how many are on here, but we could've came to you 15 different times. But this allows us to kinda do it in one fell swoop. And then there might be a couple other over the course of the next six, eight months that come in. But this really helps. I mean, it makes it more efficient, so.
So, so some people did not fill one out at all.
That's correct.
Veterans Day people filled it out, but it got submitted late.
Yes, that's correct.
Then we would be dealing with the ones that are totally a new entity that just created whatever else.
Correct.
Well, I, I would concur with Derrick. I think that I have no problem with adding the Veterans Day at $300. But again, if, if that committee would feel better that, no, this is the way we're, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I guess either way with that as well. It's not a do or die for me, but.
And I think there wouldn't be anyone on that committee that wouldn't say that this was not a, an event that certainly met the definition of, of tourism. Yes.
And I don't, again, just guide me. I mean, I, I am very comfortable with the tourism statute and very comfortable making determinations on what is and is not tourism. If, if this, if this is something you want Susan and I to handle, or the Tourism Committee, we absolutely can. But if you want this to continue coming to you, certainly we can do that too.
Well, I like the way this is being handled. And I agree with Randy that I think under the circumstances adding the 300 to the Veterans Day Parade Committee, I think is appropriate at this time. They need the kinda seed money to get them started raising money. So that could certainly use it.
You were asking basically, should we bring them to us for approval or just trust the committee?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to trust the committee.
Okay.
Ultimately, we're gonna set the amount that goes to the committee.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm good with that too.
Okay.
I, I like the report to come and show us that after the date stuff. But that Tourism Board can do it and-
I mean, at some point, we're basically saying this is how much we can, we can afford to spend. And with it, that's gonna do their best. I mean, trust their judgment.
And I think-
I think the process works really well.
I think it has worked really well. It was great to have the input from the committee. And also, they made some great suggestions on how maybe we couldn't participate dollar wise, but we could use our services to promote. For example, they suggested maybe doing some advertising or something, cosponsoring advertising with some of these groups that we wouldn't feel met the definition of TGT at this time.
Right. Reading the comments and the amounts, you can tell a lot of thought was put into it. And it was, I mean, they doing the best they can with that amount, so.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Oglesby and Dunn, what are your thoughts on the Tourism Committee handling these?
Well, I think it's a good idea. That kinda justifies having the-
The committee.
The committee.
And they spent quite a bit of time reviewing all of this. The, everyone received an application. We all got together as a group and we had written comments. And I think it went very smoothly this year, very seamlessly.
And Commissioner Howard's not here to comment on it, but I, I've heard nothing but good things about what the committee's doing. And certainly, I've said it before, but in working with Susan, we're very lucky to have her. She's doing a great job. And so, yeah, I, we have good rapport, good communication. I, I think it'll work just fine with the committee. And if you're comfortable with that, then we don't need a motion or anything today. We'll just take it back and get it taken care of, so.
Well, we really appreciate it. We really appreciate your support.
And let your committee know, we appreciate the-
Well, they've worked really hard and they've, they've just been wonderful to work with. And I appreciate every single one. So appreciate it. Thank you gentlemen.
Do you have any vacancies on that committee? Or did you get the, all the slots filled you really want?
All the slots are filled at this time. And, and everybody's attending the meetings and staying afterwards and talking. And, and we are really sharing and communicating. And we're excited to move forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you and have a wonderful Memorial Day.
Okay, next agenda item then would be the approval of the April 2018 EMS report and the FCECC report.
Good morning, Commissioner. The April EMS report, we had 281 responses, averaged 9.37 a day, bringing us to 1,209, which is 10 over where we were in 2017. So having a pretty typical year from the last year. We did have deposits of $91,984,000. If you break that down, EMS deposits at 9,054. We had education deposits of 1,930, bringing us in at about 21,156.7 over what we need to make each month. So, so far been a good year with total year deposits of 284,833.05. Once again, with larger deposits, we have larger adjustments of $59,220.59. We will be sending 20,000, or we did send 20,099.72 to the Set Off Program, $7,687.91 to Midwest Collections. And we had 15 move-ups. So it was a pretty eventful month of April. If you go through and look at the page five, that's the data report. We transported 178 patients out of the 281. We did transport one patient to a nursing home. Everything else was standby refusals. We did have a 24.91% refusal rate for April, which is a little bit higher, but we have a few months where we have higher ones and then the average out. So the last couple of months after this one hasn't been too significant. So we'll keep an eye on that. Any questions I can answer on the EMS report?
I have a question on the first page, deposits. Year-to-date deposits, 284,000. And yearly budget amount is 850,000. They show negative 565. Is that just catch-up over time?
It's what we do. We budget that we have to bring in for our budget, 850. So that's just a declining number. So every time we, every month, that'll go down. And hopefully by the end of the year, it's in the positive. We don't wanna see it in the negative. So that, that's all it is. You'll see that our year-to-dates. And if you average that out, we're way ahead of where we need to be to meet the 850 by the end of the year.
Okay. Your motor vehicle accident, no transport. Typically, do you, when, when do you not go to an accident? Or do you, when do you go to an accident, I guess?
Anytime we're dispatched to go out to an accident, we go. Those all depend, like right now, it's starting to get nice out April. Everybody gets out in their four-wheelers. Everybody gets out and starts driving around. We start seeing an increase in motor vehicle collisions about April. Most of them are low speed. We get there, they've got a stiff neck, they've got something, don't wanna be transported. So anytime we get dispatched out to them, if they call into the communications center and say they've got back pain, or if they call in as a non-injury accident, and officers get there and they're complaining, we get sent out to those too if the officer requests. So those are the different things that we get sent to. But a lot of times, and one thing we're seeing too, is even some of our bigger collisions, the way cars are built, we may have one patient that's injured and three of them that aren't, just depending on where they're sitting in the vehicle. So that's kinda how that works.
Saying dispatched, who would make that decision that there is an injury? Is that the, the person that's in the accident request, says they're hurt, or the police officer, or the dispatcher? I mean, who's saying?
Dispatch doesn't make any decisions on whether somebody's hurt or not. That's a, either you could have somebody call in and say, I just witnessed one heck of an accident. With them describing that, we're gonna get everybody in route. And then if we need to back off, we can. If somebody calls in and says, hey, I'm sitting here, somebody's hurt. Or like I said, if it's a, comes into the non-injury and then the officers show up and say somebody's hurt. So as far as a car wreck comes in through the questioning that the dispatchers will ask, they may determine there's some injuries there. But most of the time is if somebody calls in and says, we just witnessed one heck of an accident, or we've got somebody hurt, somebody bleeding, that kinda stuff triggers that. And you'll see over the next couple of months, an increase. And then we've seen that so far this month also.
So would any of those under refused medical, if you get to an accident and they, they say, you're hurt, and then they say, hey, no, I'm not going, I'm not going. Does that comes up under the the MVA no transport? Or does it come up under refusal, I guess is what I'm trying to find out?
Okay, I'll break those down for you real quick. That's a good question. Medical refusal means, let's say, we go out to somebody's house that maybe have a flu-like symptoms. We get there, we take their vital signs. And they're like, you know, I don't think I wanna go. And we'll sit there, coax them, try to get them to go, depending on what the situation is. And some of them, we can't. The thing, if you look at the lift assist on there, those are the times that we go out and pick somebody up off the floor. They may have a lift chair and a rug in front of it. And they gotta raise it up and it becomes a slipper. So like, they're not hurt. They just slid out on the floor. They can't get up by themselves and we go pick them up. The medical refusal is gonna be more of somebody doesn't feel good, doesn't feel good for a couple of days, they decide to call EMS. We go out there, evaluate them, and we, and we can't get them to go to the hospital. And then your MVA, obviously, is gonna be any kind of correx. The diabetic no transport, one thing about that one, if you remember back a few years ago, we used to average seven or eight of those a month. By putting in some of the practices we put in with with the EMS, we've cut that down to where we're very few of those anymore. And what that was is, we'd go out there, have somebody who had low blood sugar, we'd treat them. Their sugar came up and then they didn't wanna go to the hospital because they didn't really have a medical need at that point. So we've really worked on cutting that down.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps a lot. Thanks Nick.
Thank you.
You wanna do a separate motion on these Derrick? Or do we just need to do that one? Or is it more of a report than a write-off, so?
Just approve the adjustments for April of 18. Make a motion to approve the adjustments for April 2018 for the EMS report.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes. Okay, Franklin County Emergency Communications Center report.
The thing I wanna say before we jump into that, I just got notification Monday. We did receive the Mission Lifeline Gold Certificate again for heart attack care, stroke care. So this is the fourth year in a row we've received that recognition. So that's a pretty good accomplishment. Jumping into the communications report, I've kinda changed a few things up. Every month, I think I change it a little bit. So I kinda play with it. But we had six, or three, 3,613 CAD calls put in. That means that there was cards put in that many times in the month of April. Averaged about 120 cards a day, giving us a total of 14,600 calls, cards put in for the year, which is actually 743 calls down. We're looking into that a little bit to see what's going on. The next part is the April user report, where it breaks down the month of April to see who the highest users were, the number of cards put in for those departments. Below that is the 2018 report. That gives you a breakout of every department up to the end of April. So you can see how many for each department. And I'll leave that, you guys can read through it. On page three is just a better snapshot. So you can see the difference between 2017, 2018 for each department. You can kinda see the Ottawa Police Department leads it with Franklin County Sheriff second. Wellsville PD third, then EMS and Ottawa Fire Department. And it breaks down from there into the smaller departments. Page four is the one I really wanna talk about for a minute is at four and five. If you look at page four, you can see the first chart there is the call time report. That's basically just for the CAD calls when they come in. Oh, that's for everything. That's a breakdown of phone calls, 911 calls, and the CADs put in. The breakdown below that shows that the number of calls for service are the CAD calls. We had a total of 3,373. That's an average of 112. You look at the 911 calls, we had 1,218 as an average of 40 calls a day. The administrative line calls, it was 4,280 of the administrative line calls. And that's 142.93 per day. So you can see during the day, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. If you look at page five, that breaks out the peak times for each one of those. So you can see between the hours of about nine to nine, 74% of the business is done in there. That's our peak time for administrative calls. That's the peak time for CADs calls. And that's the peak time for the calls of service put in. So when we were talking about looking at those flow positions, that stuff, that's why we kinda was looking at the nine to nine is because the percentages there spell it out that that's the peak times. On page seven, that's your 2018. Let's go to page six first. Page six is the total for 2018. So that just gives you a look and tells you the average of 2000 up to the end of April. But they average about 122 CAD calls. Average 39, 911 calls. 129.77 administrative line calls. So that's the business that goes on. Page seven breaks it all out like I showed you before. And it stays consistent. If you look between the hours of about nine to nine, actually about eight to nine, you can see that we're pretty busy in the center. Any questions on that that I can answer? Or any more information you'd like for me to bring? Or too much, or?
So the administrative line that you are talking about are calls, they're going to Sarah's desk, or they come into dispatch, or? Is there, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way to educate our public to try to get those calls out of dispatch?
Well, when you think the administrative line, those administrative lines are the 3,800 or the, or the 1,200 line calls where they come in, or the 1700. When they come in to, they could be anything from a cardiac arrest to somebody asking how to get ahold of the the PD or the Sheriff's Department or EMS. They range from anything. You can pick them up. Those go to the dispatchers. So they do pick them up. But that's, that's a large gamma of calls that come in. There's alarm companies, like the other night when the storms were happening. When the alarm companies call in, they don't call in on 911. They call in on the administrative lines. So there's quite a few CAD calls put in from those. So there's really, I've looked at that too to see what it was. And I say administrative line, they just, that's basically what they're listed out on our phone bill. They are just the 242, 3800 number that people call. You have officers or EMS fire calling every time sometimes. So those are answered by the dispatchers.
What would be your calls for service then?
What's that?
Calls for service column, the CAD then. Is that the ones that you turn around and then?
Those are the ones that we put into tracks.
Okay.
For what's going on. So that could be something as simple as a tree in the road, to something as major as a multiple vehicle collision. You see some discrepancies in some numbers on the first page and on the second. How that breaks down when we look at it is you may have a CAD car, like if we have a multi, a big accident, that may have four or five agencies on that one CAD. So when you break down the list of users, their numbers are gonna be higher than the actual CAD numbers 'cause it breaks down of each one of them that's on it. So when you see that, there is some discrepancies in the numbers, but those are because we're actually looking at how many times Ottawa Police Department would put on a CAD. But there may be like a medical emergency, you may have three people on that one CAD car. So that gives you a better look at what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, before you go, you briefly referenced your staffing and float positions. What are your thoughts? I guess, share with the board your thoughts on dispatch's current staffing level.
I, I'm, well, we finally, we got people hired. We're going through the training. So we do, we are considered full staff right now. One thing that we are seeing is, you know, that float position we talked about was gonna be like a Wednesday through Saturday and then a Wednesday through Friday the next week. I think it's gonna be very important that we look at adding that float position, adding one more position to that. So we have the 10 people. We have two float positions, one that follows one shift, one that follows the other. Because you can see between the hours and nine- Because you can see between the hours of nine to nine, they're busy. And there's a lot of times where Sarah or I will go in there and start answering administrative line calls because they've got so much going on, and I don't want to pinpoint it on anything. It's, they've needed that, they've needed that third person for a while. We had to figure out where to put them. And now I think we have the numbers to justify the peak times that we got going on. For years, they've had the two people in there. Uh, one thing we have noticed with the new radio system being very nice is there's some adjustments. From before, we were monitoring seven, and now we could be monitored up to fourteen lines or channels. We have law enforcement all in one frequency, then we have the information channel. There's a lot going on in there. And when you have three phone calls going on and you have one accident going on during that peak time, that third person's a must. And that's, uh, one of the things that I think we really, really need to be focusing on is getting that up to three people in there, nine to nine. Looking at the minimum of staffing, of course, if somebody's gone that day or whatever, we just fill back up to two, and we set some standards that have that. But strive for the most of the time being three people during the day. So that's, the numbers show at the dispatch centers around us. If you look at, like Miami County, Miami County has two dispatchers and three different, or two dispatchers and two dispatch agencies and one dispatcher and another. So they're running five for the same thing we're running two on. So I think we can handle it comfortably with three people, putting them in there at the peak times and having a staffing for, and having a schedule for that.
So you got some that are being trained still, right?
Yeah, we have two going through training now, uh, that I anticipate probably the first of July, we're gonna be kicking them out on their own. We do have, uh, one part-time, we have two part-timers actually that are picking up a lot of slack. We've got some really good people in there working. It's, uh, been interesting working with them and learning the different nicks that we have, or the different personalities that we have, and we got a lot of talent, so. It's just, the process for training does take a little bit of time, and when you add the, uh, the new radio system in there, and you add the new paging way, and we got the number of calls, we have done a good job, and I, and I, I'm happy for the, happy the sheriff has obliged, but we've gotten pretty much all the protect, we've gotten all of the protection for stalking, protection from abuse out of their orders, what they used to put in. So we've been able to minimize some of the stuff that was going on, which has been great due to the fact that we're learning the new system and that. But I think it's gonna be very important that we look at getting enough dispatchers to cover three during the peak times most of the time, because there's, the other day I stepped out there and took administrative calls when I was down there because they were so busy.
Okay, anything else? That's good. Thanks for that report.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, our next item then for, uh, approval rezoning application. All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners. The planning commission earlier this month did consider the rezoning request. This property is located, uh, on, uh, Haskell Road, just a little ways west of the Stinson's Meat Processing Facility, that most of you are probably familiar with. The purpose for this rezoning was to allow for the division of an existing, uh, residence and the outbuildings associated with that residence, so it would be retained in the, uh, uh, family. The remainder, which is approximately, uh, uh, two hundred and twenty-four acres, is going to be sold to an adjoining farmer, so it will be, uh, continued to be used in agricultural operations. The planning commission, after reviewing this, found that it was consistent with our competency plan, our zoning regulations, and the requirements, uh, required of the golden factors for the golden case, and therefore have made a, a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve the rezoning from an A-one to an RE residential estate zone, and to direct staff to amend the official zoning map accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Everybody have a question for, Larry on that? Not then, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve rezoning application eighteen oh three dash fifteen seventy-one to rezone approximately seven point five-four acres from A-one Agriculture Zoning District to an RE Residential Estate Zoning District, and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair of the note.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Larry. That takes us to, uh, staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I, uh, in the last month or so, we've added a couple, uh, new members to our management team, one of which was Jamie Wilson, who was our deputy appraiser. We have him now as our county appraiser. Uh, I'll have his contract in front of you probably next week. And with that, will be a resolution that you all will sign, and then it'll be formal with the state. And then the other member is Brandon Sands, who I've asked to come today. He is our new maintenance director. Brandon worked with us as a maintenance technician, um, but did a fantastic job. I'm incredibly excited about bringing Brandon on. I would tell you that in terms of our finances, the, the thing that scares me the most is just the ongoing maintenance of our buildings. I mean, we have older buildings, and we don't have some flush reserve fund to take care of that. So having a maintenance director that takes good care of what we have can promptly identify issues when they start, can stay on top of it. I think it's just critical for our long-term picture, and so, um, just, uh, had to work on Brandon a little bit to get him here, but, um, certainly glad that he's part of the team now, so.
Anything else? Okay, uh, any other staff members? See Larry, Nick, uh, Alan's, uh, back there in a minute. Uh, Janet?
I just want to let you guys know that the special election for USD two eighty-seven, the advanced ballots will start going out today, so um, that covers residents in, um, three of your districts. So if you hear questions about that, just, um, direct them back to us. Um, there were some questions yesterday based on what was on the radio, um, but I think we got all those answered, and, uh, so we're just getting ballots out the door now.
I know you talked about there's fewer voting places.
Yes, there are. Um, there were fifteen polling locations that were would have been open for a two eighty-seven election, but several of them had very minimal amount of residents at them. So um, the school district and I, um, kind of made the decision to close some of those because a lot of them had like twenty or twenty-five residents at that polling location. It didn't make sense to spend the three to four hundred dollars to open the location to uh, only have that many potential, potential voters there. That doesn't mean that all of them are gonna show up. So we did mail out individual mailers to each of those residents, letting them know they can get an advanced ballot or, um, directing them to another polling location, so.
So they, they will go to the polling place on a date?
The election date is June twelfth, so that is the actual vote in-person day, but anyone who wants one can get an advanced ballot before then by contacting my office.
Okay. All right, thanks. Uh, you want to go ahead and do the commissioner reports and stuff, and then we can go to that? Okay, uh, any commissioner comments, reports, Derek?
Cole, you want to go first?
During the hospital meeting, their days of cash on hand are starting to improve. Out of the ordinary to report from there, though.
Okay.
I recently, at the request of, uh, the administrator's office, was added to the Prairie Paws, uh, finance audit committee of Prairie Paws, and, uh, so I attended my first meeting with them last Thursday in Gardner, and they, it did show a little bit better finances. And they are going through the process of some personnel changes in different positions and are trying to uh, get up to speed with all of that, and, uh, have some better plans, I think, to try to dig their way out of the, the debt that they have each month and, and make themselves in a better position at the end of the year, so. I thought that was, I thought that was good. I thought it was nice that they reached out, that they wanted to be a community partner to ask one of us to be on their board as well, so.
Roy?
Yeah, I went to the area agency on aging board meeting, uh, yesterday. Uh, a lot of it was spent on, um, idle funds and what to do with idle funds, and we let them just, uh, sit in, sit in the bank until we need them and get hardly any interest, or uh, invest the idle funds in something that would uh, be safe, but also, um, get a little bit better return on interest rate. And Ryan Hennington of Edward Jones gave a presentation on, uh, short-term CDs that, um, pay quite a bit more than what the banks are paying right now, and and it's, uh, money that's, that's, uh, needed in, in, uh, reserve to sustain the organization, and we decided, decided to go ahead and, um, pursue this and invest those funds in short-term CDs. Also, spent a lot of time on, uh, uh, personnel policies, and, and it seems like it's continually changing what you need for personnel policies as far as harassment, uh, protected individuals, and, and, uh, protecting people's, uh, personal information and that. And we try to bring, try to bring the, uh, personnel policy up to date to meet the today's standards, and it's very hard because, uh, when you're talking about weapons in, in the workplace, or weapons not in the workplace, and how to handle those things, and it's, uh, uh, pretty difficult subjects, and, uh, uh, all the stuff on harassment is also, uh, you know, ongoing and, and, uh, ongoing, and it's hard to, you know, just verbally get it on paper to cover every instance that might come up. So anyway, they're working on their, uh, personnel policies and also working on their budget for next year. That's what the area agency's mainly doing, um, continuing to check on the nutrition sites and all the counties that they, uh, serve in, and, um, seems to, that's why it's, uh, transitional, always, uh, changing how people, um, participate in, in the nutrition sites, or they don't, uh, uh, don't take part in those nutrition sites, it's hard to manage those. I have, uh, one request to the county commissioners, uh, Memorial Day is this coming weekend, and, uh, Hino Veterans of America is supposed to be hosting the memorial event on Saturday at ten o'clock, uh, down at the War Memorial, and we'd like permission to, uh, use a War Memorial for the, for that event. And that's all I have.
Okay. I, last Thursday, I attended the, uh, board meeting for the Franklin County Development Council. Lisa Johnson gave us an update a bit on the, uh, director search process, and uh, I think that Derek and Richard Neinstad and her are the ones that are screening the applicants and going through that and seeing where they're at. Did a little bit of talk on the upcoming, um, events, um, the, uh, June the twelfth is that investor networking thing from four-thirty, and that'll be at the historic post office event center now, down, downstairs of that one, and so, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll see a good turnout for that. Going back to, uh, Commissioner Dunn's, the, mention on Saturday's, uh, Memorial Day events, I see no problem with whatever they want to use down there at the courthouse and that, that procedure. I think that's great, that, I know there's some things done on Saturday, some on Sunday, and some on Monday, so definitely, uh, opportunity to, uh, recognize and honor those who have served our country and, uh, especially those who died doing that. Okay, um, should turn this thing over to, uh, Alan for a minute?
Yep.
Okay, Alan, why don't you come up then, and, uh, just talk a little bit about the, uh, radio system?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, this has been a long process, and today I can stand up here and tell you that, uh, after a couple of years of research, and a lot of discussion by everybody in the county, that officially we have, uh, cut over to the new radio system. The new P twenty-five eight-hundred radio system, we are considered a state add-on for our county. Uh, we are using some of the state equipment uh, and networking, some of their towers. We've got five towers in our county, uh, in our project, uh, that started, uh, last April, uh, when discussion started to use a P twenty-five radio system. I just want to take the time today and, uh, thank everybody that helped with the project, and we've got representatives from Motorola here. Uh, give them an opportunity to say a few comments if they'd like, and anybody else uh, that would like to, uh, make a comment about the system, um, if that's okay with everybody. Uh, first off, I want to thank the county commission for supporting and helping through the process for the funding of the radio system. Um, and, uh, our county administrator, uh, Derek Brown, and Janet, our county clerk, for, uh, helping with the contracting and the financing side of it. Uh, we had a lot of uh, work to do at the beginning of the project to get everything put together, and I don't think that that people really realize that we have taken eleven radio systems in the county and twenty-five different departments or agencies, and put them all on one system, so that we are interoperable throughout, uh, the county. And that's anywhere from Public Works and Utilities to all of our emergency services. They can now, uh, with one radio, talk to anybody that they need to talk to, whether it's day-to-day, uh, on a large incident or a disaster, and that's a huge accomplishment, uh, for us. Uh, our radio coverage, uh, we haven't done the, uh, final testing on that yet. Uh, we still have some radios that we're adding on to the system. Uh, their radios are being installed today as we speak, so uh, we still got a few things that need to be finalized on it. And then we go into our, uh, warranty and maintenance phase of the system. So, uh, there's still some parts that need to be put together, but, uh, I want to thank our Public Works Department, uh, for finding a place for us to store everything. Uh, when it came in from Motorola, we had a lot of equipment. Six hundred and seventy-five radios were shipped to us, uh, plus all the equipment at five tower sites, and all of the dispatch equipment. And that took up a pretty huge spot out at Public Works for a while. Uh, and then also, they did some work for us like they did when we put our towers in fifteen years ago. Uh, they added some rock and upgraded our sites, uh, for us, so they'll be good for us for several years. Um, I also want to thank Dustin and his IT department for working with us on the networking that needed to take place. Uh, Ottawa Utilities took a part in that. Um, so it's a cooperation between everybody to get our, our system operational. Uh, the nine-one-one advisory board, uh, has been meeting for the last eight or nine months, uh, developing policies and procedures for our system to operate, uh, properly, and we're still going through and discussing and making changes, and I can see that will continue in the next three or four months as we move into the system farther. We've, we've talked on our system for about a month now. Uh, the city of Ottawa, uh, all the city utilities, Public Works, Police and Fire, all of them are on our radio system now and had part in this. I want to thank them. The city of Wellsville is the same. Their Public Works Police, uh, are on the system. Uh, city of Pomona, uh, our eight rural townships and district fire departments have all, uh, bought into the system. Um, and then I want to, I want to also thank Motorola Solutions, uh, for the design, installation, project management, and then we'll have the ongoing maintenance and warranty service from Motorola. TFM Comm was, uh, the installer. Uh, they also helped with the design. Um, TFM Comm's been our, uh, radio maintenance provider for years. They built our system that we just replaced, um, but they were- They built our system that we just replaced, but they were, had a big part in pushing us towards the P twenty-five, helping with the design and stuff on the needs, and then they're, they did the installs, they're doing the installs of the mobiles for the majority of the, the departments, and providing support. They'll also have some of the non-Motrola maintenance and support at our tower sites also as we move into the future. So I'd like to thank them. Performance Electric did all of our electrical work at all of our sites. KDOT, we worked with them to tie in. They're in charge of the state radio system and in developing our radio template and the work that needed to be done on the user agreements so that we could use their state system. I'd like to thank them, and again, they have a system administrator that I get emails from now if we have any problems with the state system. So there's day-to-day communications with KDOT. Also, the Kansas Office of Emergency Communications provided the training to our users of the radios. They also helped us in developing the templates and how we should program things, and there was just a lot of moving parts in the last eight months. And with that, I would like to, Derek, would you like to, to say anything?
Yeah, I would. I, I, one, I would like to thank you, Alan. This has kind of been your baby, and I think you've done a fantastic job with this. I've said that before, but I, you know, your handling of this, given its complexities, is probably the most impressive thing I've seen since I've been here. This was just an enormously complicated project. He mentions twenty-five other agencies. The amount of planning and communication and cooperation involved was tremendous, and I think really in everything that I do, we, we try to look at what is best for the citizens of Franklin County, and there's such a huge fiscal component to that, not only when you're literally spending money, but how you're using your time as staff members. And this process has been ran, it's been efficient. I don't feel like there's been a lot of wasted time. I think in going with the P twenty-five system, we've done right by our people because we have done everything we can to future-proof ourselves. I mean, we could have went with a lesser system for maybe a little bit less cash today, but we would have been upgrading it a lot sooner, whereas now we have a system where we've got a warranty for what, ten years? And it can be added on to from there. And so I appreciate the board buying into that vision because we're trying to do, we're not just looking at tomorrow, we're looking at five years from now, ten years from now, and I think it does take some courage to, to take chances now or to spend a little bit more now when the payoff isn't necessarily going to come now, but fiscally, it will be there. And in terms of, really, the most important thing is our ability to communicate with our first responders has just been enhanced greatly, and so being able to provide prompt service to people in need, I, I just, I, I'm very thrilled with this project, and again, thank you, Alan, for all you've done on that.
Thank you, and I, I couldn't have done it without everybody's cooperation as we go into it. I would like to ask, introduce the Motorola team that's here today. We've got Aaron Corcoran, who's our sales. Jeremy Rab is the one that I'll be working with for maintenance and warranty once things get shifted over from install, and then Jeff Ricklich Close is our project manager for the system. So, Aaron, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So on behalf of Motorola and our partners, I'd like to thank you all for believing in Motorola and really looking, not just today, but tomorrow, for a mission-critical radio system. You all provided a system to your first responders that is mission-critical, and that's very important for what they do. It's a thankless job, and the biggest thing is getting them home safely every night, and you all provided them a great system to do that. So on behalf of Motorola and our partners, I want to say thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to Alan. So when we started this, I remember the first time I came to his office, and we butted heads, and we, we had a very spirited conversation, and he has been great to work for, work with, and what he did for the county, I just want to say thanks to him as well. He did a great job, so thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else, Alan, that you?
On behalf of TFM Comm, I think we've worked with you guys in the county, in the cities, and everybody. It's been probably four years. I remember I was just a little time ago, somebody from the fire department here in Ottawa gave me a ride on the fire truck. That's something I'll never forget, and the Dalmatian dog looked at my face all the way down Main Street. We appreciate it. We thank you all for your years of loyalty and hopefully even more years to come, and we thank Motorola and everybody else, we sure appreciate it, and we're here if you need us. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks, Alan. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Ottawa Police Chief Dennis Butler, and on behalf of the Police Department, the city of Ottawa, I'd also like to thank you. Some of the sentiments I was going to express have already been mentioned, but I think it's important for you and for the citizens listening to know a few things. When citizens turn on their faucet, water comes out, clean water that's safe to drink. They don't think a whole lot about how that happened. Same thing when they get in their car and they drive down the road, they expect to go down a paved road in many cases that doesn't have potholes, that's safe to operate their vehicle on. I could go on, and the radio system is one of those things that citizens don't think about, and they don't, because they don't use it. But I have to tell you that the expectations that were laid out for this project, and it did switch directions from one system to another, are ones that, that I share personally as a police chief. I have really high expectations of myself, of the employees that work for me and the services we provide and the profession as a whole. And when you have a partnership, you want the same thing, you don't always see it the same way. And Alan mentioned it very eloquently when he mentioned that there were eleven different radio systems and all these different users, and bringing that all together under one roof, a state-of-the-art system that we won't have to upgrade or change several years from now. It's a lot of money spent upfront, but in the long term, it's money well-spent, and I think it's going to serve the citizens of this county well for many, many years, long after many of you aren't sitting on that dais, long after I'm gone. And I think we should collectively be very pleased and proud with the services that we have now put in place for our citizens for the foreseeable future. So again, I just want to thank you all for being willing to trust your staff, to trust us, and bringing you recommendations that we felt would be best for the long term. Thank you very much.
I know there's representatives from a lot of agencies out there, you know, different users that you brought together, so I don't know if there's any of them just to identify or not, Sheriff's Department?
Morning, everybody. I also would like to thank all the commissioners and Alan that has been involved with the radio system. You know, forty-some years I've been in law enforcement, and one of the things I've always recognized was be able to talk and communicate with other members out on any type of calls, and, and knowing that we have a system now that we can hear each other and communicate is a big thing. Everybody has taken a lot of time getting this together. Alan's put a lot of time, and, but I really appreciate that the commissioners have looked to see that we have had this issue for years, and finally somebody has, you know, taken it over and, and got us what we need out here, so I thank you very much.
Good morning, commissioners. Jeremy Rab, Motorola, customer service manager. As the handoff continues, the project will come to a close. Jeff will, Jeff will move out of the picture slowly, he'll always be a part of it. I will step in, and I will be working with Alan for the next ten years. I, I will be here as your advocate to make sure that the services that you guys require, the warranties, the upgrades that you guys need are fulfilled, and that we keep you guys as technologically advanced as possible with all of your equipment, the upgrades, the radios. If there's issues, concerns, you can route those through me, and I will work with Alan, and I will get those handled for you to the best of my ability, so you have one point of contact, you're not going all over the place with this stuff. As counselor and chief and sheriff said, you guys have really moved forward considerably for your county. You've done all of your citizens a great justice by doing this. You can probably rest a lot easier knowing that your, that your first responders are able to communicate and that they're going to be able to get there in time, and those nine-one-one calls will be answered. Systems, it's always a tough decision for communities to make because you have to spend money, but when it comes to a life, when it comes to answering those nine-one-one calls for the people on the other end, there's just, how do you put a price tag on that? And you can't. You just know that moving forward, you're doing right for your folks, and we have a good partnership, it'll be there. TFM Comm, myself, our resources, and I'll be with Alan for a long time, and we will continue moving forward and making sure that you guys are operational.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Renaud, one thing I might add. I have a close acquaintance with the Association of Counties, who's part of their administrative team, and I spoke with him recently, and he advised me that they are getting tons of calls about what we've done with our radio system and our dispatch center from other counties who have heard us on the radio, have heard about our radio system, who want to kind of imitate what we're doing here, and that, I mean, I've told you many times, that's what I am striving for in all of our departments, but to have that now, I, I just, you know, I think it's something that you all should be proud of. I think it's something that Franklin County should be proud of, and I hope that we can serve, and I know you've volunteered to help out with other counties and help them, you know, hopefully accomplish the same thing, so.
Well, certainly, and I see representatives like from the Northwest Fire District and other areas, agencies out there. As, as a board of commissioners, and you're right, tough decisions on the money, but when we have to make progress or whatever it might be, then you look and say, what can we do the best? And I think, Alan, this is what your group did, you brought us the best and said this is what we need to do, and we got it done, and that's a compliment to everybody that's in this audience, as well as on those boards and committees that you've mentioned, to get us there. So if there's anything else, Alan, we can celebrate back there and whatever else, so.
I think that we should take a few pictures when we get back there, showing our partnerships and stuff, so one of the big things that I didn't mention in this radio system that to me was very important when we started, not only the interoperability being a big part of it, but also we have gone from a system that we don't have to worry about when you push up the button on your radio to see if it'll talk or not, we now have redundancy built in, and that's part of the public safety side of the system. We now have that redundancy built in there, so I think, again, that's just a big step forward for us. And again, I would just like to thank you for the support and cooperation that we've had with everybody.
Should we go into our adjournment first, then?
Yeah, let's close down the meeting.
Okay, nothing else, then? Obviously, the office, the county offices will be closed on Monday for Memorial Day, so I would consider a motion for adjournment.
So moved, good adjourned.
Second.
Motion, all those in favor?
Aight.
All right, we are adjourned.